Okay, I'm gonna call to order the April 10, 2019, Meeting of the Board of Education. Mrs. Schutzhund, please call.
Mrs. Grabtree?
Here.
Mrs. Erickson?
Here.
Mr. Gambiani and Danson? Mr. Hamlin?
Here.
Mr. Matheson?
Here.
Mr. Broman?
Here.
Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Mr. Matheson, please, do you have your pledge?
None. On the actions. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Okay, first we have Communications with the Host School. Is Mr. Edwards here?
Yep.
First of all, I'm gonna say thank you for coming here and allowing us to host the Board meeting here at Johnson's School. I think it's been a couple of years since you've come here. This time, we're gonna do something a little different. It's hard, sometimes it's very hard to capture what Johnson's about when you stand up here and do so whatever. One of the things is I created a new video that the district has been using to try to capture this year, what Johnson is, who Johnson is, and further do all the videos to be supposed to. So, Don, go ahead. And, uh...
Clifford Johnson Elementary School is a place unlike any other in District 200. We are, I like to say, unique. I think that's a great word, a great adjective, to describe our building, our culture, our environment, our family. When I was selected by the Principal, Tim Callahan, to be his Assistant Principal 12 years ago, and I walked through those big, blue doors the first day of school, and I met the students, the staff, and the parents, I knew I was in a very special place. It was a different time back then. The demographics were shifting at a rapid pace. It was the only school at that time with self-contained bilingual classes, starting from kindergarten and ending in third grade. Back then, there were two sections of self-contained bilingual classes in each of the aforementioned grade levels. It was an interesting time. Within two years, I was promoted to Principal, and the journey began. The journey. What a journey. What a ride. I've been truly blessed to be the Principal of this great school. I could go on and on about how proud I am of Johnson Elementary School. However, I think there's a better way to articulate Johnson pride.
I just think we've all been really working together as a team, EL, Reading Department, math coaches, we all just really pitch in and make sure we're getting all those kids and that all the kids are getting exactly what they need, whether it might not be the same for every kid, but all the kids are getting what they need to make sure they progress and no kid gets left behind.
I think our school has succeeded academically because of the culture that we've created here at Johnson School. Our staff works as a family. We have a "no child cannot learn" attitude, and we're really lucky. Our administrators allow us to do what we feel is in the best interest of the kids to help them reach the top standard that they have. We are blessed with an amazing math interventionist. We have multiple reading teachers, our EL staff, our special ed staff, everybody combined, our support staff, we have the most amazing aides, and everyone just works hard so that the kids can all achieve success.
Ms. Beck helped me with reading and math because she explains, sometimes I don't get what she's talking about, so then she explains it where I know what to do and other people know what to do. And when she explains it, she always brings Mr. Edwards, so she uses him as an influence in the word problems, so then everybody is happy and laughs at Mr. Edwards when he's in the word problems because he's funny.
So, I feel very passionate about Johnson. Johnson has a lot of great successes, but then the past five years, the teachers have worked really hard, our students. We are such a family in this school, and it's a very collaborative environment, that I'm very proud of the successes of the school. Johnson is my heart and soul. I love it. I think the kids are amazing. I love playing Uno with my kids. They get really mad at me when I cancel Uno, but it's truly a blessing to be in this type of school where kids really love to learn and teachers really embrace and love our students.
This year, we've really had the support of Derek Edwards with setting up our green screen studio and doing lots of training for the teachers at lunchtime with Lee Cook to help the staff get adjusted to WeVideo and learn the new program. And so, the kids have done a variety of projects this year. Some individual students have done reading projects on books that they've done. Right now, we have our second graders. They're going to start a landmark project where they're researching about the Statue of Liberty or the Grand Canyon, and they're going to create a green screen video with their landmark instead of the green screen behind them. We've also had third grade use the program, doing a spirit animal project, and fourth grade did a Civil War project with WeVideo as well, with green screen and just the video production and message production with that.
Multicultural Day is a wonderful day for our students because they have the opportunity of learning about different countries and cultures, and most importantly, I love it when our own families have the chance to present and our students see their parents as the experts in the school that day.
My most positive experience I have had in the classroom collaborating with others was when I was in second grade and we built a bridge for a science project. Then during that project, we had to work together very carefully or else the whole project would fail.
PLCs, also known as professional learning communities. At Johnson, a PLC is very important. It's when teachers come together, they look at data, they determine whether a student is progressing, or if a student is exceeding, or if a student is below expectations. And then, as a PLC, which contains grade level, teachers, and also additional individuals, could be a resource teacher or an EL teacher, combined, they work together to try to increase the achievement of all students. They're very effective, and it works. The data proves it. I attribute that to being one of the reasons why Johnson is excelling so well. Collaboration amongst teachers and strong professional learning communities.
Skill, if I were you guys, I would be the more concerned about... Hold on one second. I'm looking at this, okay, you had fantastic growth on vocabulary and context. You had like the best growth in the district on that, and 87% mastery, that's amazing. What I would work on is 2.5. 2.9, you're kind of middle of the pack. That's a hard skill, and that's a skill that if the kids don't have all these other skills, they're not ready for that. Does that make sense?
My favorite day is Tuesday because we could go to music and we learn different instruments and different songs.
Who's your music teacher?
Um, Mrs. DePlin.
You know, a lot of cool things happen here at Johnson School, like Mr. Jancius will come to the lunchroom with the band students and put on an impromptu band concert, which encourages other students, younger students, to want to participate in the arts. Very cool. We talk about a family atmosphere at Johnson School, and it truly is. An example is the beginning of the school year on Teacher Work Day, we all had a barbecue dinner together, or barbecue lunch, I should say, where we had it catered in. Gentlemen, barbecued right there on the spot for us, and we had a good time, getting our fingers all sticky and wet with ribs and chicken and all the great barbecue fixins. We have a really good PTA here. They support the classrooms and the school in various ways. They also have fun weeks. For instance, we had a week where students could wear funny hats and, you know, wear funny hairdos, and of course, we always capture that. It's very cool. Kids love it.
I would have to say that the Johnson Jaguars gave me academic confidence. As a child that grew up in the special education program, I did not have much of that, but they gave me the foundation that I needed. The teacher that inspired me the most was Ms. Eschbada because she always was there to hold me when I was not at my best and always encouraged me to continue down my path.
Needless to say, I'm very proud of Johnson Elementary School. From all the academic success that we have attained and will continue to attain, because of all the hard work and relentless effort that the students have put in, that the staff has put in, working hard and hard, and the administration has put in as well. We believe, I know you heard it in the video, that all students can succeed because all students will succeed. And it's with that belief, I truly believe, is one of the reasons why we have raised our achievements so well. Last year was a great year for us. We're now ranked, according to Illinois, as an A-minus school. We helped, according to Dr. Shuler and according to Dr. Ozinkowski, to push the district from number 10 in the state to number 8. We do know that that can't be done by itself. Besides what I mentioned in this video of all the people who attributed to that success, it is also the individuals that are watching this video, that's the school board, that's Dr. Shuler, his cabinet, Faith Daughuis, Chris Solagi, Charlie Kyle, Erica Loyackno, Rodney Mack, Bill Farley. All of them, all of you, are part of the success as well. We won't stop. We're gonna continue to work hard, and our students are gonna continue to grow. Thank you for all that you've done, and thank you for supporting Johnson Elementary School. Have a great night.
I just wanna say thank you for the opportunity to share the video and share a little bit
about Johnson School with us and the guys, and feel free to come by anytime and learn more about Johnson, and we hope you guys can be on the multicultural day as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I have to say that Johnson School is my adopted school. I've made several visits here, and I have to say that personally, it's quite the most impactful business I've made across our district, so I gotta thank Dr. Johnson himself and all the staff. It's been pretty remarkable. Before we get too much further, any modifications to the agenda for Board members? Okay, one thing I do want to point out, we did make a slight change. We do have a separate second consent agenda item for Mr. Matheson. That one changes the note. Next up is recognitions and achievements. Dr. Shuler?
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. It is my pleasure to welcome up to the podium our teacher from Wheaton Warrenville South, Carrie Beck. So, gosh, going back, I think Carrie's gonna provide a little bit of context for this, but going back, I think probably almost a month ago, we saw on Twitter really an amazing celebration of an accomplishment of one of our students in the arts. And so, I think I've shared with Ford in the past, I love the fact that over the course of the year, we celebrate amazing success in the arts, we celebrate amazing success academically, we celebrate the success of our students in athletics. It really shows the true, I think, the true nature of the academic and the program that we offer. So, without further ado, Carrie, would you come up to the podium and tell us a little bit about the amazing accomplishments of Peter?
So, hello, my name is Carrie Beck, and I am the AP Photography Teacher at Wheaton Warrenville South High School. I'm honored to present to you tonight Senior Tiger, Peter Ruffalo. Welcome. Peter has been awarded a National Gold Medal by the Scholastic Art and Writing Organization for his digital artwork, "Things Unseen." Nearly 340,000 works of art and writing were submitted to the 2019 Scholastic Awards. Peter's work was selected by some of the foremost leaders in the visual and literary arts for excellence in originality, technical skill, and the emergence of a personal voice for vision. Receiving this national medal places Peter within the top 1% of all submissions. Since 1923, the awards have celebrated teen artists and writers from across the country. Peter is now part of that legacy, joining the ranks of celebrated alumni like artists Andy Warhol, Robert Indiana, Kay Walkingstic, writer Sylvia Path, Truman Poe, Joyce Carol Oates, and filmmakers Ned Dunham and Ken Burns. Besides feeling like a local celebrity from my eagerness to share the big news to the whole Tiger community, Peter also has been invited to New York to be celebrated with his fellow gold medalists. Also, his work will be published in the artandwriting.org online galleries, and his name will be listed in the 2019 Yearbook, a companion publication to the Best Teen Art and the Best Teen Writing Anthologies. Finally, Peter's gold medal makes him eligible for art schools' scholarships. Wheaton Warrenville South believes Peter is the first ever to win this award, or I think for district, but we know for our school. We could not think of a more deserving art student. We are so proud to have him in our program and watch his talent and work ethic be celebrated. To the school board, Dr. Shuler, and Mr. Claypool, of course, thank you for your patience and support for the arts. The arts truly make a difference in our students' lives. Thank you.
We have a long agenda type, but feel free to leave if you so choose. You can stick around, but we would not be offended. We do have one public comment tonight, so I'll read my little statement here. Public comments are valuable and important to Board members. We welcome the opportunity to listen to concerns and issues that are important to our community. However, it is the Board's policy not to directly discuss or take action on any ideas until the time has been taken together, adequate information, and objectively evaluate available options. Please understand that lack of action or response tonight does not imply any lack of interest in what is being said. In addition, to preserve confidentiality, the Board and its president reserve the right to request that items relating to either personnel or students be provided to the Board privately or in writing for consideration in a future closed session. The Board must protect the civility and decorum of the meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the Board, our district leadership team, and the democratic process in your comments tonight. Please use a microphone, state your name, and address your comments to the Board. Please leave your comments to three minutes. Please be factual and courteous and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or contradicting the members of the Board or set. If you feel your matter needs to be discussed in more detail, please attend the Board's next chance to chat on April 17 to present your comments or present your comments in writing by email to the Board. One speaker, Michelle Delmaso.
Hi, thank you. My name is Michelle Delmaso, and I'm currently the Board President for NSU Lacrosse, which encompasses all of the boys and girls' programs in District 200. I want to start by saying thank you, thank you on behalf of the whole lacrosse community for your support over the past several years. I'm here to personally invite you to two separate events. The first event is Mike Bulwin, who is our varsity coach at the high school, is going to be retiring. He is one of the reasons why the program has been so successful. Mike was a player at Air Force Academy and still holds the number-one scoring record in the NCAA still today. So, we are gonna be gathering at Arrowhead Restaurant after our game against Lincoln Way East this Friday night, and I know some of you have been involved in the program at Wheaton Warrenville South and Mike Bulwin, so if you are available, we'd love to see you after the game at Arrowhead. The second invitation is an invitation I'll be emailing to as well, that on Monday night, April 22nd, we will be featuring all of our varsity lacrosse programs at Wheaton North. United Girls will be taking on Eagle Valley at 5:30 at Rexley's Field, and then we call it the Crosse Town Classic, where Wheaton North plays Wheaton Wendell South. The two varsity boys' programs will be starting at 7:00. It's been a tradition during the Crosse Town Classic that we also promote and recognize our little, I think they're called Eagle Breeze, our little lacrosse players, so they'll be having scrimmage during their halftime show and give them a chance to be on the turf and under the big lights of the high school. And then, the other very important tradition that we have during our Crosse Town Classic is lax gifts back, and we pick a fundraiser to do every year, and this year, we will be collecting donations for People's Resource Center, starting at 5:30 and going till 8:00 PM. And I will also, when I send you this email, I'll help you write a flyer so you know what's happening with times and what we're gonna be collecting. So, we hope to see you at our special events, and again, from everybody in the lacrosse programs, we thank you for your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. A couple of things I wanted to share with the Board under my report tonight. First is that this week, we did officially launch or start our state testing programs in all of our schools. I had an opportunity to check in with Julie, and I'm sure Faith and Chris and Charlie can reiterate this. Number one, our building's doing an amazing job of organizing for the testing programs. This is the first year that all of those state tests moved online, and I actually threw in a couple of principals today to say, gosh, I'm sure it's nice not to have all those big boxes of tests lined up, but Julie just shared, and I want to compliment Rod and his staff for getting ready for that transition this year. It has really gone without a hitch. It's not to say some of the testing has had, you know, some little minor hiccups, but really has worn smooth, which compliment, tack compliment to Julie Ozinkowski, who goes above and beyond to make sure everybody's prepared for that and that obviously our schools and students have opportunity to be successful. So, again, that starts now. Testing window goes for a couple of weeks, but it's launched through this week. The second thing I wanted to share with the Board, and I'll pass this around, is that every year, the Illinois Association of School Administrators in Page County does a recognition breakfast, and each superintendent has an opportunity to bring a couple of guests along that have volunteered time and service to the school district. In fact, I see one of my community members who I think joined me maybe a year or two ago at the breakfast as well, but this morning, the guests that I invited to the breakfast were Jim Broman and Jim Gambiani, to thank them for their service on the Board of Education. We say often, but I don't think it can be said enough, that the volunteer work that four school board members did do is unfortunately not always recognized in the way that it should be by the community members that you are elected to serve, but I know the amount of time that you give to our students, our community, and their programs. And so, again, I want to thank everybody, but especially thank Jim and Jim, and I'll send this around, there's a nice little write-up that just shares a little bit of their time and service on the Board that feel free to take a look at. Along that theme of retirement and recognition, I wanted to mention to the Board that next Monday night, beginning at 4 o'clock, Erica goes until 6 o'clock?
6 to 7:30.
6 to 7:30, I'm sorry. I thought it started at 4 o'clock. Ms. Mayor Gress.
Oh, I just remembered, I was thinking about the founding. 4 to 7.
Yeah.
City Hall.
So, next Monday, from 4 to 7, the City of Wheaton is hosting kind of a meet and greet thank you for Mayor Gress for his time served to the City of Wheaton. Certainly, Mayor Gress has been a huge advocate of District 200, and so, if you have some time or interest in stopping by during that window, I know that Mayor Gress would appreciate that. And then, kind of on to Tuesday night of next week, starting at 6 o'clock, the Student Excellence Foundation is hosting their annual Celebrate Our Stars event. There are six teachers that are being recognized, three from the north side, three from the south side. Always a great event. The Foundation does it paired with kind of a pizza tasting event, so you get a little bit of food, great company, and an opportunity to celebrate what clearly is our biggest asset in District 200, and that's the staff that work with our students. So, please join us if you can on Tuesday at 6 o'clock. And then, finally, I just wanted to mention that we have been actively monitoring a couple of what I think would be very, very difficult pieces of legislation that have passed. One of them in particular is a piece of legislation that mandates a specific amount of physical education time. I want to be clear, we have daily physical education in District 200, so we're certainly not opposed to physical education, but the reality is, I think we've often shared, is that the amount of time we have in school is a finite amount of time, and so, when you start to put in place mandates for specific amounts of time in one area, it just creates a situation where something is getting priority over another need, another opportunity, and we think that's better left to local control and how that's handled. And so, that piece of legislation was moving very quickly through a committee hearing last night. It got held by the sponsor, so she put the brakes on it, which is a good thing, partially due to, I think, the amount of advocacy that went around the topic and didn't travel the Springfield, but did submit electronic testimony on the topic. And again, Senator Holmes, who is the sponsor of that, has agreed to hold the legislation for the time being. Does not mean it's gone away, but we are still, we're still monitoring that.
I have a quick question on that. So, if I remember correctly, is it middle school and high school is 45 minutes, but if our class periods are not quite that long, we're shy several minutes, what do we do?
Good question. Well, I mean, it depends probably on exactly how it's written within the bill. I mean, I guess worst-case scenario, you'd have to make some adjustments to how you allocate for that time. I'm guessing you wouldn't be missing period of time, and you'd probably be okay, but...
Jeff, there's also a piece of legislation that was progressing, mandating five hours of instruction. Is that still...
Still is, yeah. That one, I think, is still moving forward, so again, I think the piece you're talking about is the piece that would actually restore the kind of five o'clock hour minimum. Actually, it's a piece of legislation that would make the way that we handle Election Day this year at Pleasant Hill, we would not be able to handle it that way to the kind of required minimum five-hour day, but that one, I think, is still progressing. I don't think it's yet been finalized, so...
Any other questions? Okay, next we have Consent Agenda. Twenty items. First, it is acceptance of gifts from Longfellow Elementary School PTA. Number two is approval to post English 1 textbooks. Number three is approval of French II textbook, Bien Deux. Number four is approval of German II textbooks, Gehen Sie Anblick Level 3. Number five is approval of Spanish II textbook, Asse Y Si De Se II. Number six is approval of a resolution of... Number six is approval of a resolution for representatives for DWC, the DuPage-Westcooke High Incident Cooperative. Number seven is approval of a resolution regarding petition for detachment and annexation. Number eight is dissolving the Intergovernmental Agreement of ELO, Expanded Learning Opportunities. Number nine is approval of First Amendment to the tower construction and lease agreement. Number 10 is approval of athletic trainer services contract extension. Number 11 is approval of a truck lease. Number 12 is approval to set the last student attendance day for the 2018-2019 school year. Number 13 is approval of a consolidated action plan. Number 14, approval of ABM Industry Group's LLC Custodial Cleaning Services Contract Renewal. Number 15 is approval of bids for 2019 facility improvements, flooring work at four buildings, and ROE building permit applications. Number 16 is approval of bids for 2019 facility improvements, tennis court repairs at Wheaton Wendell South High School, and ROE building permit application. Number 17 is approval of resolution and final contract for guaranteed energy savings with Performance Services. Number 18 is approval of bills payable in payroll. Number 19, approval of minutes, March 13, 2019, open and closed, and approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to November 2017 as allowable by law. And number 20, approval of personnel records to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative certified classified and non-duty staff. Are there any items board members want removed from this consent agenda? Okay, any information, Dr. Shulman?
Just a couple of things that I'll mention, because I think a few questions that I had received. Number one, I think there's a question as to whether we received any public comment on the textbooks that have been posted. We had one public comment supportive of the decision to purchase those textbooks. Two, there was a question on the DWC, the DuPage-Westcooke High Incident Cooperative, and kind of what that is, why we belong to it. We belong to that because we do access some of the high incident programs for deaf-blind supports for students, and so we maintain that membership so that we can access those Three, I had a question on the ELO, the Expanded Learning Opportunities piece. And again, I just want to confirm with that cooperative dissolving, that is still an opportunity available to students for next school year. So, that runs through the end of next school year. We're working on, obviously, plans to determine which of those online courses we want to continue. Beyond that, based on our own student access to it, any material that was created though through ELO, we get. So, that is the intellectual property of all three districts. We get every course, every professional development opportunity that was created through that cooperative. So, we do, that was a part of the original agreement that we signed on to ELO, that that's joint intellectual property. And so, that's one of the transition activities we gave to the current director to make sure that not only do we have the course, but we have an included classroom, which would make it available in a format that can be used forward. And then finally, actually, I'm sorry, two more. The Consolidated Action Plan, new item, that was really simply, it's a step we have to take to have that approved. All of our grants that we apply for in Title I, Title II, any of the grants we apply for through the state are using that Consolidated Action Plan as a part of our completion of the grant process. So, this is not changing at all. The kinds of grants that we get or amount, this is just changing. It's the new process that the state is using, which should actually make it easier to apply for those grants in one kind of consolidated format. And then finally, we put in your green folders tonight, a spreadsheet that gives you a summary of all of the bids that you're approving, not only tonight, but you did approve some bids at a previous meeting. So, in total, the board will be approving bids to complete $7.2 million worth of capital improvement work at our buildings that will take place this summer. You might recall, we had put $8.4 million worth of work out, partially because we wanted to see where bids came in, but 7.2 was our target budget number. And so, a few of the alternates that we had taken for maybe additional roofing sections, we're going to hold off on to stay within that. Tuck pointing, we never even put out to bid, that was one project that we had on the list, but wanted to kind of see where numbers were coming in. And just based on the first set of bids, we never ended up putting that piece out to bid. And then I think there are two other smaller projects, one that JR is going to take care of with his own guys internally, and then I think one section of flooring at Lowell that we're going to hold off on. And again, we did that as an alternate, just wanting to see where the bids came in, but it truly, there is some time left on those items. So, we're not pushing anything off that absolutely was condition one, year one. We're getting all of that worked on. And again, I'm just confirming for the board that you, with the approval of these bids, will be doing $7.2 million worth of work off of your capital plan this summer.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah. A little deeper on the ELO, if I could, please. What was the driving force for the dissolving of this Intergovernmental Arrangement, number one? Number two, did we have any stats relative to the number of students in District 200 that participated in that? And lastly, I know this was quite a bit of money upfront, and then there was some annual ongoing expenses that were quite a bit less, and I'm just curious what that overall, what I want to call experience meant to us, if you will. So, those are three questions, if I may?
Yeah. So, I have the, well, I have Faith, and I'm not sure I can give you the total answer in terms of total cost in the aggregate tonight, but I can certainly get that for you. What I will tell you in terms of kind of driving force behind the kind of the disillusionment is that as districts continue to evaluate kind of what their individual needs are, it just became apparent that sort of interests were taking like the development of programming different directions. So, while I think it was a good idea to bring the three districts together to really launch the concept and the professional development around fully online learning, I really think Jim had just kind of had run to a point where districts were kind of headed slightly different directions, not in the concept of online learning, but just in kind of their interest and needs. And I think it was determined that it was probably better to now just kind of take the opportunity solo, so that each district could go in the direction that it wanted to. Our highest experience in ELO has always continued to be through the summer, but as we established, and so each year, the amount of money districts paid was kind of contingent on our size relative to the other districts. So, our cost was the lowest of the other districts on an ongoing basis, but what it also meant is that the number of seats allocated to District 200 students were proportionate to kind of that overall enrollment. Over the last couple of years, we've actually been spot on during the semester with the targeted number of seats a lot. There's been some slight variance, but Faith, I think it's been right at like 35, 40 students during the school term, like the academic school term, and then our summer numbers have kind of fluctuated. So, I wouldn't say without a doubt, it was a successful experience in terms of where it's launched us. It's moved us into some discussions about blended opportunities that are being created for next year. And I don't know that each district individually would have been able to get to where we are had we not kind of taken that path for the movement. And just again, kind of a reminder, the disruptor that kind of drove us to ELO was a charter school proposal that came through, a number of school districts attempting to enter a space that candidly we just weren't. And so, the good in that is that it took us to a place where we weren't, right? We've launched, I think, a new opportunity for students that I'm confident will continue to grow.
Thank you.
Just follow up on that. We will continue some kind of online offerings as at the end of next year and so on. We'll hear more about that going through.
Does X being the degree hamper our ability to buy, buying power, to buy at scale, or to buy cheaper? Because now we'll be buying our own versus with consortium?
Yeah. I don't think so, I guess for two reasons, and Faith, jump in. One, we've been purchasing a lot of content through ELO. Early on, we did buy some content for classes through the consortium where there was probably a scale to that. As more classes have been developed recently, they haven't really been developed with purchased content. They've been developed by staff across the school. So, no, there's no cost in there. Really, the other, I think, major cost associated with ELO is the platform in which those classes are delivered. The ELO was using Canvas, which was a commercially purchased platform. Internally, we've been using Google Classroom, which is a free platform, and candidly, we've evaluated it. I think even a lot of districts that bought Canvas a number of years ago have said, gee, if Google Classroom is where it is now three years ago, we wouldn't have had to make that expenditure. So, we're not purchasing a platform for the content. It just means that development moving forward will obviously sit on our administrators, right, versus the support.
Perfect. Okay, I just had one really comments for item number 17, the Guaranteed Energy Savings Contract. Some of these comments might be better to push down to the Facility Committee and really dig into some of these things. This is, so this is eight years, this is the eighth phase of this, eight years roughly that we've been doing this. And the whole payback model is built upon this calculation of annual operational maintenance savings. It kind of makes this mad work. And so, I just want to get a good handle on achieving those savings if we ever, you know, the contract says that if we don't achieve those savings on an annual basis, then PSI pays us the difference. I don't remember ever seeing anything on that. So, I'm just curious if it's working the way the improvements we've been making, which are needed, kind of turn out to prove the model. And then I guess, so that's a series of questions maybe for the Facility Committee, but in terms of specifically this contract, just a question, there's a contingency in this number that's 5% of the total project cost. I'm just curious how that works. Does that stay with PSI if they don't use it, or does it come back to us as unused contingency?
The contingency number is, if it's not spent, it will come back to us. It's used for, and it also ensures that we won't see a change. It's a good thing for us. We have had reports each year. They're working on the report right now. We can talk about it with the Facility Committee. And you're correct about the savings, how that works.
Okay. No, thanks for the clarification on that.
I'm sure.
Contingency, I think. It does pay for things that come up, especially when we're doing this type of work that are unforeseen, basically. But I was just curious how it worked at the end of the project, so thank you. Okay, any other questions?
I have one comment. Listen to me on item number 20. And, you know, I read that closely, and I was greatly, I don't know what the right word is here, happy for somebody, I guess, but maybe not for District 200. I can't leave this without saying a few good words about somewhere. The, I think it was about six years ago when I got the board, we had a change in superintendents, and we had the opportunity to be led internally by someone special and really helped us out. You know, I hate to see it happen, but you know, it is, and I'm sure there'll be a positive thing for it. So, thank you, Faith.
Ditto to that, you've taken us a long way, so thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second, move by Mrs. Crabtree, second by Mr. Bromman. Can I have a roll call?
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Bromman?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes. Consent agenda passes. Okay, consent agenda number two is one item approval of bids for the 2019 facility improvements for roofing work at five buildings and ROE building permit applications. Any additional information, Dr. Shulman?
No additional information. Again, just clarification that we have in the past, rather than if somebody abstained from the whole agenda, if there's something that needs to abstain on an item, we'll move it to second consent agenda.
Any other questions? Okay, can I have a motion in a second to approve consent agenda two as presented?
So moved.
Second, okay. Move by Mrs. Erickson, second by Mr. Hamlin. Mrs. Hutchinson?
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Do you want to abstain?
Mr. Bromman?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes. Okay, consent agenda number two passes. Okay, we have three action items tonight. The first item is adoption of a resolution authorizing non-reemployment of full-time first, second, and third-year non-tenured certified staff. Dr. Shulman?
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. So, both action items, one and two, these are annual resolutions that the board adopts in just a little bit of context. So, employment law in the state of Illinois stipulates that if you have not released a teacher by a certain date, they are automatically re-employed for the following year. And so, annually, the district employs both some part-time teachers, where at this point in time, we may not be absolutely certain what the need is next year in terms of their percentage of part-time. And then we also employ some teachers on one-year contracts that may be either filling in for maternity leave and/or just covering a position on a one-year piece. And so, a number of these staff members, especially the part-time, will be back with us next year. These are all honorable dismissals. It is really just a protection to make absolutely certain as we move into next year that we have the flexibility to not be overstaffed going into next year. So, Dr. Powell, any additional comments you want to make on that?
Only additional comments is even the one, two, and three-year teachers that we release, if they did a good job, we look to staff them as well, and we're actually looking in that direction right now. So, they're all part-time, but some of the ones that did one-year leaves, we are looking through if there's positions for them. So, we do look through that list on both ends.
Any other questions?
Question. So, what's the time period in which all those teachers are in Wendell wondering if they can fly for next year? And is someone talking to them explicitly about that?
Yeah.
Yeah, after, if this is approved through this board meeting, then tomorrow, the principals will talk to them individually. There's a letter, and they will talk to them, and there's positions that are open. Obviously, each building principal will have those conversations. But there is a time period between knowing what our staffing is and then being able to hire. So, we're kind of at the point of being pretty clear with what our staffing is going to be next year. We've talked to all three levels. We've looked at all the specials, we're getting into the specials as well. So, there's a period, probably it could be a couple of weeks, it could be a month, but being a former principal, you have those conversations with those people and say, continue to look for jobs, but I may have one for you. So, those conversations will start tomorrow.
I still have a question. So, if you're a first-year teacher and you get rid, and then we hire you back and you are just a one-year contract, those one-year contracts somehow accumulate to the four-year point of being tenured?
Yeah, they would. So, tenure law doesn't, doesn't have meaning continuous, so even if there's definitely a break and then you were released, but then brought back next year, that would be your second year toward accumulating tenure.
Are there some second, third-year, first, second, or third-year teachers that are not covered on this list, out of curiosity, or is it every first, second, third?
No, we, absolutely, a lot of your new hires are not on this list. This is a very small percentage of all of the teachers that you've hired over the last three years. Again, I will say that our turnover, our attrition rate is very, very, very low. You know, we have brought back by choice, I think, almost all of our teachers that were hired last year. So, our buildings have done an exceptional job of hiring people, and it's still a question. There are some really good people that we've given a great opportunity to that we hope we can keep back in District 200. If not, we've given another district a great launch of a year with a teacher. But the reality is we just, based on people returning from leave and all of those leases, we won't unfortunately have jobs for all of them, but we'll bring as many back as we can. can.
Okay, anything else? Okay, can I have a motion in a second to adopt a resolution authorizing non-reemployment of full-time first, second, and third-year non-tenured certified staff and authorizing notification according to the requirements of the Illinois School Code, section 24-11 as presented?
I move for this in motion.
Move by Mr. Roman, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Erickson. Mrs. Hutchinson?
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Okay, action item number one is approved. Action item number two, adoption of a resolution authorizing non-reemployment of part-time non-tenured certified staff. Any questions? Okay, I'll make the motion to adopt a resolution authorizing non-reemployment of part-time non-tenured certified staff and authorizing notification according to the requirements of the Illinois School Code, section 24-11 as presented. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hamlin.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Okay, action item number two passes. Action item number three is approval of the 2019-2020 fee schedule. Maybe the last and long conversation.
Yeah, so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Pyle to walk the board through this, but just remind you, this is the culmination of a number of discussions on the fee schedule. He did go back through Finance Committee, and so the recommendation that's been presented tonight was developed and, I think, confirmed by the Finance Committee, it's recent. So, Dr. Pyle?
Thank you, Dr. Schiller. Annually, the board has had the notification that has to approve our feeless administrative report recommendation on an annual basis around this time. As Dr. Schiller mentioned, the board's financing, they did spend a considerable amount of time talking about fees specifically associated with our athletics and activities and discussions of fundraising as well. For the 1920 school year, the recommendation is to keep all of our registration fees the same. The fees that parents at all levels would pay would stay the same. When we look and reviewed the all the kindergarten program there, we do have a recommendation to reduce the amount of that based on increased participation in the program, and as we evaluate that against our expenditures and costs of running the program. And again, the great amount of work went into looking at the athletics. That's the other change that we are requesting in the fee schedule, and that is a $10 increase from $150 at the base school level to $160. That fee has not changed since the 10th level school year when it was raised to $150. Really, the costs associated as we look at the cost of staff, transportation, and season referees are going up, so we felt it was time to move that up. Percentage that the fees will fund will move up slightly. We are looking a hole in a range of 20% to 25% as far as those fees go. So, with the will, the desire of the Finance Committee to not have long gaps where we come back with large increases, and we'll look at incremental increases, maybe over a three-year period or so as we reevaluate and see what the public percentage of that fee is funding the overall cost of running the program. So, again, tonight we're asking the board to approve the fee schedule with those two changes. Also, we're mentioning the high school consumable fees. Some of those did change as well, and that's just at the cost of providing consumable items, chairs, and the principals are very helpful in that process, as it seems throughout the textbook, you know, the pricing for us, textbook side. So, those fees may have changed as well. Again, for next year, no change to the straight registration fee, change to 80K, which is a deduction, and then the other fees for at all levels at the high school level would be the recommendation. Also, chairs at the finance committee level as well.
One thing I would add into that as well, so we are not recommending approval with the fee schedule of a separate agreement with the lacrosse programs. And so, we just want to make it crystal clear to the board, not. So, what that means is that all of our high school sports, all of our sanctioned high school sports would be charged the same fee. So, lacrosse participants would be charged the $160 fee as all of our other sports do. The one other recommendation that, again, would go with that, again, so that I think we're treating all of our sports on the level of playing field, is that we would not charge the rental fee that goes to the swimming program as well. So, the students will pay the participation fee, but the rental fee that's been charged to that program as well, we are recommending that that comes back. But all of our programs on the same wavelength.
So, I have a few questions. There are, I know there are other miscellaneous fees that athletic activities charge. Are we keeping a handle on those? I'm going to use golf, for example. You have some greens fees, and you've answered my question on swimming. Where, I guess I'm still going back to, I'm still tying in fundraising and all of that. I look at it as one thing. I really want, I want parents to know upfront what this is going to cost them before they make the decision to participate in an activity. I'd like them to be able to know what that is. And so, in order for me to get behind voting yes on a fee, I need to understand how we're going to communicate to parents, and maybe that's not possible, at least a range of what it is going to cost before they make the decision to have their child participate. Is that something we can do, or can we not do?
Certainly, of course, I see no reason why an athlete is making the decision to accept the spot on the team. I see no reason why we can't do that. I don't know that all of our sports have a meeting with all parents before kids even try out to communicate that piece, but I do know that all of our coaches have a meeting with kids, kind of immediately upon, where you've been asked to join a team. And we can, I think, we can clearly work with our athletic directors to ensure that early on, we are sharing with parents the complete cost to participate and anticipated fundraising amount is this. I think if I'm understanding the question, before a parent even makes a decision to have a student try out, I don't know that we can. I'm not sure that there's going to be a super easy format for communicating all of that information before a student or a parent even makes a decision to try out for it.
I think you can. I think you can say it's going to cost you roughly $500 to $600 to be able to participate in this activity, or it's going to be able to. I've watched people leave a team three weeks into a season because cost of too much. I just want parents and students to have that idea of what it's going to cost before they make the decision to be able to do so. I think waiting till that fall sport night, you're three weeks into the season. And so, that's where I'm still kind of stuck.
I have a question and comment along those lines. So, two questions. One, does each individual sport report back to the athletic department at all what all they're charging? With my four kids going through, we did a whole bunch of different sports, and it was different for each one, but you would show up at the meeting once things had started, and then tennis, for instance, they'd tell you, okay, everybody's got to buy this, this, and this clothing, your check goes to this person, and there's, there were different piece parts. But, so, one question is, does the athletic director or the athletic department even know what all of the different sports are doing along those lines? And secondly, I'm kind of with Chris on this, that it shouldn't be that hard based on historical information to have a chart that says, here are the sports, here's the ballpark amount of incidentals that parents will be asked to cover. And there could even be, if you want to get really organized, a piece that addresses the issue of fundraising, because some of that's not fundraising. I've had my kids on sports where we were not required to fundraise, but we did have to pony up for the team shirt and the team sweatshirt and what have you. But there could be some indication that this is a sport that fundraises. This is what we traditionally hope each student will raise. And I know that there are also sports, too, where you have an option. You can fundraise, and we will be paying less, or you can decide not to fundraise, and...
Yeah, so you have all that information. Actually, the board has seen that information. As we look at it through Finance Committee, the big charts that we've looked at identified, at least for the first two seasons, both fall and spring, and you go back through the charts the last couple of times, off to the right, it included all of the money that was raised beyond the athletic fee itself, so...
That's not money that's raised from anything, it's...
Or from direct parent contribution. So, everything that people were asked to either fundraise or write a check directly for was captured on that.
But that, that total number does not tell me, as an individual parent, it's going to cost 60 extra dollars for the girl or my child. Is there more specific?
Yeah, then I apologize. I may have misunderstood the question. I thought part of your original question was, do we have all of the information relative to what's being asked for or fundraised or contributed? We have that. Second part of the question to Chris is about, can we calculate and communicate to folks an anticipated amount? We're very best to develop a procedure or process for doing that. The earlier that we do it in advance of the season, I just want to caution the board, the earlier we do that, the more that we're going to be building some of those numbers based on anticipation, and some of those things may change slightly. But, so I guess what I was responding to in terms of, like, when that can be communicated, again, I do think as a student has made the decision to join a team, but to try to be as transparent as we can about the costs that are associated with being a part of the team. If it's the interest of the board to try to get that information together as early as possible and somehow publish that, we'll work with our folks to try to do the best that we can around that.
Just on that point, I believe each coach has to submit to the Activities Department their planned fundraising, right? And so, that must, I'm not sure how far in advance that happens. That should give us, we could ride that process a little bit. I do support Chris's point about, you know, letting them know, letting a parent know upfront what to expect. Because I think that fundraising plan, it may require a little more advanced planning by a coach, which I guess might be hard, but I think that's fair, and I think it's, that makes sense to me as a parent. The other things, apparel, I've never had to experience that, so I'm not sure about that. But I would say the fundraisers can be planned a little more in advance. If we ride that process through activities, we should have at least a common process we can hold on to.
And again, we have a common process. I just want to be real clear on that, and not trying to communicate that we don't have a process that we've shared and communicated. I think it's the second part of that, on when is that solidified and shared with a parent? That's the element that we have to work on a little bit.
I still have a few more questions, too. So, I'd like to know, what do we cover as a district in terms of what's needed for sports? I know we don't play with paper cloth. Again, I understand that. But are we covering everything that's, for the most part, equipment-wise, to be able to run that sport, or are we fundraising for equipment?
Do you want to take a stab at that?
I guess you're asking for specifics in what the football helmets, shoulder pads, those type of things.
Things that are required.
Yes, those things we, I try to think of, you know, kids may bring their own baseball bats, they may bring their own tennis rackets, things of those nature, obviously. I'm just trying to go through the sports in my head here and think if there's something that we want maybe buy. I know they do buy some equipment with fundraisers money, maybe supplementary stuff, but...
Okay, so I have parents that'll say to me, why are we fundraising for mats for cheer? And, you know, I can understand fundraising for experience, but when we're fundraising for things that are needed for that sport, or are they just asking for something above and beyond what we consider necessary?
Yeah, it may be a situation where an individual program is seeking to update a set of mats before we determine. It's absolutely essential to replace those. Again, I've showed examples in the past where I think if you're seeing equipment that's in use or that's being fundraised for, it's because the program has decided to pursue an additional piece of equipment that maybe is over and above what we deem to be absolutely essential to run the program.
And so, who's making that decision? The athletic director? And is there parity between the two, the two high schools to offer, have the same type of equipment then?
Yeah, the athletic director is approving, and I cannot say with certainty that there's absolute parity across the two buildings. But I will say, if you look at most of our programs and sports, there's not absolute parity. I mean, there are nuances to the program at each of the two high schools that candidly is just not exactly the same. But it's overseen by the Athletic Department, and we technically submitted to the board at the last meeting a draft administrative procedure for how the district office has oversighted that.
And then, will we be getting any kind of report from the district office, who's now going to be looking at that on a regular basis? Will the board be getting a twice-a-year report or that, so we know how fundraising money is being spent?
We can absolutely provide that. I guess the board will have to determine how often you want to see that. We'll build that into our rule.
I'd like to make a couple of comments as the Finance Committee has addressed this topic. I think we're talking about kind of two issues here. This is the basic fees, okay? And then, we have these external costs, which really technically are not district money. They go through the activity funds to supplement the process. As I recall, I don't know, four years ago, parents at Mead North decided that the basketball floor was, you know, needed upgrading more prior to when we did it, you know, I'll call it the district level, or the prioritization of it at the district level. So, you know, there was a fundraising project that did that and very successfully, and it was, you know, a fine addition. And I think that, you know, I've talked about activity funds a lot over the years, and I think the monitoring, we're now assuring that, you know, there's a plan submitted, and there's a internal audit that's occurring over to make sure that's in compliance. I think what I'm hearing, and I don't disagree with it, is that we need to be able to communicate better to the parents. And, you know, there's things like, you know, how do you separate, let's talk about tennis, a tennis racket? Are we going to provide a tennis racket for each student? Or tennis shoes? I think, you know, there's fine lines here that we have to say, is that part of the cost of the program? I guess that would be an expectation, that my child's going to play tennis. And I think we have to obviously provide the items of safety, whether it be football helmets and shoulder pads and so on. So, I think, again, to try and get, you know, get through this topic that we've talked about a lot, I think, again, these are the basic fees we're talking about. And I think we want to continue to monitor that internal activity scheduling and so on, and enhance it as you see, you know, as you're suggesting. And I don't disagree with that. But I think, again, you know, tonight, I feel like we're voting on the fee structure, which we looked at. You know, fundamentally, we try to cover about, you know, 25% of the cost of these programs. And, you know, because we feel that the other costs are very important to the educational process, where, you know, I mean, there may be a day we can't afford that, but at this point, we still can. So, and I think, again, the funding, whether it be, you know, we, you know, the lacrosse program being a good example, you know, a couple of years ago, they came to us and asked that we sponsor that program as, you know, a sport, and we did. And the parents picked that up, and they knew that upfront. And I think that, you know, I think there's an expectation, you know? I don't think everybody walks in with their eyes closed when they go out to play tennis or swim or whatever. And, you know, I got to believe there's some conversation with a parent or someone, you know, what does it cost you in the past? You know, and again, it may be an estimate, it may not be a firm number. Can we enhance that? Yeah, probably we could. But, you know, again, there is still this expectation, and there's so many costs that are beyond. I mean, take volleyball, for instance. Every child that participates in volleyball is paying, you know, a supplemental program somewhere, which costs a lot of money. So, you know, I think that if parents are seeing that as, you know, a good sport to be involved with, you know, they're going to, there's an expectation it's going to cost more than the basic fee that we charge. And so, you know, I think, again, we want to probably strengthen those, the activity fund side of it, but tonight, I think we're voting on the basic fee. And I don't disagree with, you know, that monitoring. And I can't believe that we cannot... And I can't believe that we cannot communicate a little better, you know, like this has been the cost for the last three years. You know, that would be a good expectation that we can convey. Now, when we convey that, I don't know, you know, it probably ought to be as a child shows up, you know, maybe there's a handout. There's got to be some expectation that the athletic program is providing to any child. Maybe we have to say that, whether it's fundraising, or whether it's, you know, these are additional costs or something. Whether it's a specific number or a historical number, that's fine. But again, it's an expectation that will help people make decisions, and I think that's all we can do. So that is my comments.
I think, just to kind of right on it, I think the guiding principle is reduce surprises, right? You just don't want surprises. So whatever we can do to make that a better process, I think the better off we are, which I think is all our intent. And so we're getting to a lot of detail on how to kind of fix it. But, you know, if we can reduce the surprises and let people plan and let the kids participate and have the maximum experience, I think that's the objective. So I'm really pleased with your conversation.
One more question too. So what is the plan for students that maybe are on a free and reduced lunch program? Do we take their fees and reduce them as well for athletics?
If they do not pay the full fee?
And then going back to the $10 for the Finance Committee, that brought us then into that range of the 25%? Is that what we, or is it, was it more of just a modest, maybe we have to look at this again?
We always have to look at this opinion. Jim, you may want to comment on this as well. But, you know, basically, we, I think the analysis we saw was somewhere between 20, 30% was the cost we were covering, and that's on an overall basis. It wasn't by sport, you know, some sports are more expensive than others. But, you know, again, that was the expectation. And in reality, the, you know, we're trying to provide a full breadth of activities and, you know, some are going to cost more, some are going to cost less. So that, you know, we've committed, if you want to call it, the, you know, of that sport program, you know, the fee structure relationship. And, you know, and it'll vary, you know? We talk about equities, you know, we may have different levels of salaries for, you know, the staff that supports it at Weet-Norah or So- and so on. So those costs are going to vary by school and so on, just based on who's involved with the process and so on. So, you know, again, I think, you know, I think the expectation we had was we need to move this along. And, you know, we felt that a modest increase, we didn't want to double the costs. I mean, you know, when we looked at the cost of doubling, I mean, really the economics were, you know, very non-impactual. I mean, you know, there's maybe, I don't know, it was $20,000, $30,000 in relative terms that, you know, that's helpful, but it's not enough to start eliminating processes. So, you know, and we felt that it should be modestly changed and, you know, and I think that's probably where we need to continue to do that in the future, mainly because of the cost of referees or whatever the case may be, you know, that are inflationary and so on. So, you know, we spent a lot of time on this, you know, trying to come up with the best possible solution. And I think we've reached it here, from a Finance Committee point.
Yeah, I think, just, Chris, two items Jim touched on. My own goal, and we've been through this many times, is that there's a couple of dynamics that we can't control. And Jim's touched on referees, ambulance services, whatever it may be. Then you've got the decreasing participation, which is working against us as well. So our goal is to, hey, we want to continue on, we want to fund the athletics. We're losing, not losing, but rolling. It's a 25% offset for us, if you will. And so when you're seeing a decrease, not in every sport, but in some of the sports, along with the external costs that we cannot control to fund the sports, we just felt compelled that now is time to do small incremental numbers and try to start offsetting some of the external expenses that were incurring that we have no control over, and the decline of the participants. So that was really kind of the driving logic behind the $10 per athlete.
Any other comments? I have a couple. One question, well, one, two comments really. So I think what the board is saying is, you know, we're not approving fundraising tonight, we're approving the fees. I think we're asking that we go back to the schools and try to elevate their game in terms of how transparent they are to their families about the role of fundraising, the intent of fundraising, what the parent, the students are going to have to do in fundraising, and what other potential additional costs are. That's not something that I don't think this board does, but I think we can ask that the message gets down to the schools and the Athletic Directors and try to reinforce the message from this table, that that's something that's important. I think that's kind of what we're saying here as a board tonight. Second thing is, well, I'd like to thank the team for reducing the rate for all-day career. I think there's a kind of a general consensus of all we do is raise fees. That's not the case. It's a 10% reduction. So I thank the team for that recommendation. I'm sure the parents that participated in that all-day career would appreciate it. I'm a little, it'd be interesting to watch if kind of whatever trajectory of enrollment we've had go up the last few years, has it changed now that we've reduced the fee? We should probably watch that over the next couple of years, because we still have, I mean, a lot of schools that start trying to introduce all-day career, you get to the point where you have a space issue. You know, if you keep increasing enrollment, which is great, has a great educational purpose, but you get to the point where you don't have space anymore, you know, and maybe you have to hire another teachers because your sections are too big. So I think that's something to watch over the next couple of years. Any other questions or comments?
Okay, could I have a motion? The second to approve the 2019-2020 student fee schedule as presented?
Second.
You second it?
He moved it? I second.
Okay.
The Finance Committee. We could do a combined first motion.
Moved by Mr. Gambiani, seconded by Mrs. Matheson. This is such a simple goal.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Broman?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes. The 2019-2020 fee schedule is approved. Next up, we have one discussion item, which is a discussion on board policies. More with the board agenda. One sec. Okay, what's first? Jim?
I did flip that down.
Okay, so I'm looking at my notes. What's next?
Discussion item is first.
We don't want our reports tonight.
Yeah, the discussion item is next on the agenda.
Discussion Board Policies.
Okay, what do we want to talk about?
I think we can do the old reports. I just want to make sure we're following the agendas as posted.
Discussion item is first.
Okay, so just post the electronic one, I know that...
So it's posted electronically. Discussion Items is next on the agenda, which is Discussion of Board Policies. Okay, this is Dr. Schuler.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Next is Dr. Schuler and the Policy Committee. So I think as the board knows, the Policy Committee has been engaged in a pretty extensive review of all of our board policies. I think kind of two goals driving that approval process. One is our desire to actually get the policies into a little better electronic format, that it would be more accessible, easier to use, easier to navigate, both the board and the community. And then two, at the same time, to make sure that all of our policies are updated and current in terms of language. And so we've been working with the press service on a review process. The Policy Committee, I think, has invested about 12 hours of time in the meetings thus far, going through, and we are through Sections 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, and 8 of the manual. We have two sections left. And so, just so that the board is kind of aware of processes, we go through those. Has each policy reviewed, discussed, and analyzed with any proposed changes? Obviously, if it's the same, if there's no change, there's not been any discussion on that. If there have been just minor wording changes that are not impactful to the policy itself, just either an edit or wording clarification, if the Policy Committee's been okay with that, we've kind of put that in one list of policies that will come to the board all at one time. And then if there are policies that have substantive changes that really do kind of impact meaning of the policy, the decision's been made to obviously bring those items forward to the board. First, for discussion, just to kind of get more feedback on direction, and then based on the feedback, we'll bring the actual policies through your review process as you normally would. So they would still come forward in a two-phase piece. And so there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 policies that we provided for the board tonight to consider, kind of with the guiding question that drove it. And so if it's okay, we'll just kind of go down through these and capture. So the first one is Policy 2.200, which has to do with types of board meetings. There's a section in your current policy that outlines community conversation meetings. I think that policy impresses really identify to identify the types of legally allowable board meetings that you can conduct. Community conversation meetings are something that our board has chosen to do, but even over time, that's kind of evolved. And so I think the question for the board, just as our community engagement opportunities continue to evolve and change, you want that locked into policy that you will always do a specific type of community conversation meeting versus, obviously, if it's not a policy, the board still has the pleasure through the annual improvement of your community engagement plan to hold whatever types of meetings that you can. So you can still have chat with board sessions, just not identify firmly in policy as a you shall. Gives you more flexibility, and I think future boards, more flexibility in terms of how you approach community engagement. So our recommendation is that you do remove that section of our current policy. Again, not as an effort to diminish engagement, but just to give boards some flexibility to decide what works best.
One by one?
Yeah.
We have seven, so let's go one by one and make sure that we're being clear in our conversations and responses. So 2.20, 2.200, the recommendation is remove the language. Do any board members have issues with that? No? Okay, so we agree with that portion of the recommendation.
Okay, the second one is 2.210, which is the policy that governs how you organize when a new board is seated. We actually align in our current policy that our board affirms at the reorganization meeting, both your legal representative and your architect, that's not required. I'm not sure candidly why that's written into policy. Obviously, the board at any time can choose to take that out for requests, for proposals. So again, our recommendation is to remove that out of that policy.
Any other comments on that? I totally agree. I remember the first time I voted in my first meeting, I had no relationship with any of these firms, and I was asked to vote, so I agree to take that out. Okay, next one?
2.220 is your policy that governs the Board of Education meeting procedure. We actually have the order of our agenda for board meetings written into policy itself. Most recommended model policies have a statement that simply indicates it's the board president determines the order of the agenda. Does actually give you a little bit more flexibility if ever you do need to do like a reorganization within your agenda. I think there have been times where, for a specific reason, either somebody that's coming to do a presentation, or just the way that things fall, it might have made more sense to do something to flip discussion or reports or any of those pieces. I think if you simply leave in the policy that it's the board president that determines the order of agenda, it's probably better, but again, I wanted to run that through the board.
Yeah, go ahead. Is it the order or is it the sections? In other words, the sections are static, the orders were variable.
Yeah.
That's right. Perfect. The only comment I agree to remove, and the only comment I had on that is, we do have some specific language about public participation and public comment in that section of the language. And for those of us who went to the IASB dinner, I just want, there was a lot of conversation about the role of public comment. So while we, if we follow this recommendation, remove it, I think it makes sense to go back to 2.230, Public Participation in Board of Education meetings, to review that in a little bit more depth and make sure that that policy is consistent with the way we implement it.
Yeah. Yeah, and it is. So we've renewed that policy, just know that, and I believe there's a recommended change to that one.
Okay, next up?
Next one is 2.240, which is your policy on board policy development. The last sentence in your current policy on policy development speaks to administrative procedures. So again, just clarification, the board establishes policy, the administrative procedure is how we implement that policy. But there's a statement in that policy that indicates the board reserves the right to direct the administrative procedure or direct change to the administrative procedure, which I don't think belongs in that policy statement. Number one, that's really not, establishing administrative procedure is really our role, my role, based on the policy you set to establish a procedure for how it gets implemented. So our recommendation would be that you strike that last sentence out of the policy that gives board governance over the administrative procedures.
Question on this, what do we change? That's an existing policy that was developed by some internally previously. It's not the IASB, what's the press is our, we subscribe to. That's not their document that we're modifying?
No, this is a recommended change to our policy document.
Okay, okay, which we, how does press come into that? I'm confused about it.
Press is just, it's just a document that gives you model policies that you can use to develop your own. So press is a document, it's a set of board policies that are very close to the policies that we have in terms of like numbering and sequence. And as things change within school code, as legal updates come through, they ring those updates into recommended policy change.
Okay, so they recommend based on whatever, and then a change in law, whatever, and we then evaluate our existing policy to see whether we want to adopt it. So we're now discussing our existing policy changes that are not that of press that are appropriate?
Generally, Jim, the press policies are less detailed, giving general guidance. A lot of the policies that we've been reviewing that differ from the press, and there isn't that many that differ a lot, but there are some have quirks or local adaptations, adaptations that were inserted years ago. And frankly, a lot of them, we don't understand why they're there. Some of the adaptations we've encountered is inherent in board authority anyway, so there's really no need to have it in a policy. But for some reason, years ago, the board decided to put it in. In my view, for the most part, I would prefer the going to press route, because it gives us more flexibility. And if we want to implement something that's specific to our district for some reason, we can direct the staff to do it, like we are doing tonight with respect to providing advanced information to his parents about fees. So by and large, Jenna can take a different view if she has one. We have, going through these policies, have decided, for the most part, to urge the board to adopt the press policies. There are policies that will come before the board in May or June. For example, the policy on Sherman Durst. Press doesn't have a Sherman Durst policy. It's going to be a strong recommendation of the Policy Committee that's...
So we could change the name of that?
No, we would urge the board to keep something like the Sherman Durst policy, even though it's not a press policy. And there are some other policies that, our policy on keeping a reserve fund is much more specific than the press policies. And frankly, we reviewed it, you know, when it comes before the board, the Policy Committee may be different next month. But I think the Policy Committee would recommend that the board retain what we drafted. But by and large, we're going to be recommending you adopt the press policy, because it's drafted by attorneys for the IASB, and they review this every five years. So all of our policies are automatically updated every five years, which is a wonderful service. This has been a big bugger of mine, as you well know, our policies. I apologize to Chris, when we went through this whole thing last year, we didn't have the benefit of having the press policies to compare. Now I have the pleasure of going through it with Jenna. Now I have the pleasure of going through it with Jenna. It's painful taking a pencil into your eyeball, going through all these things, but it's really worth while, and I'm just glad that we're pursuing this.
So just a couple of comments too. You asked, are we strictly changing our own policies? By making the change that's recommended in this particular case, we are in fact electing to use the press version of the policy because this is the one change from our policy, as it's probably had it written to, to make it look like what press is suggesting. And I don't have a problem with taking out the administrative procedure thing. I guess the other comment is some of the things that, as Jim mentioned, the press policies tend to be shorter, a little bit more concise. Some of our policies that we have added, we, over the years, have added language to kind of have a string into administrative territory as opposed to policy that's supposed to be at the board level. So we're kind of making sure that we're not putting more suggestive in the policy than we need to because we don't want to have to follow something very specific. When it comes to this administrative procedure thing, I don't have a problem taking it out. And I understand that administrative procedures are essentially to help the district personnel implement the policies we've set. However, I never knew a year into being on the board that such things existed nor how to access them. So going forward, I'd like to request that we all be told how to find them should we want to look at them. And also, we did learn through going through the homeschool student issue, that at least in that case, we had administrative procedure that didn't even come close to demonstrating how we were carrying up procedures. So I'd like to know that if we have administrative procedures, that somebody's actually paying attention to whether they are current, just like we are trying to make the policies current. I'd like to know that those are current. And, you know, let us know. I would like the idea that it says here that they'll let us know when there's something new. And it doesn't mean we're going to get involved with telling them how to do your business, but it's interesting to know how it's working.
Okay, any other comments on 2.240? Okay, so I guess we're accepting the recommendation?
4.150 is policy on facility management. And actually, there's two aspects of this policy that, one, we're actually not recommending a change to our current policy, but I guess seeking affirmation that we're going to keep it in place. So our board does have very specific language on the naming of facilities, and it does go a little bit beyond, kind of go to recommended policy language, specifically that a building is not named after somebody who's alive, very specific criteria. And I think in working with Bill, as that criteria was developed, there was extensive time that went into it. I would recommend that we keep our name, our current naming criteria as we have it. But there's a second section in that policy on facility management as well that talks about the threshold for if we're making an improvement to a facility, there's a dollar threshold that stipulates when that needs to come to the board for approval. A dollar threshold is actually pretty low. You look at improvements that we might need to make to a facility, ours is $12,500. Our recommendation is you bring that threshold up to the public bidding threshold because if we're making an improvement that exceeds that public bidding threshold, it has to go through the bidding process anyway, which means it's coming to the board for approval. And so that would allow for an improvement that needs to be made to a facility that is below that $25,000 threshold. If it's in the budget, it would allow us to execute that improvement instead of it coming to the board.
So I just don't understand the actual words on the page, what it means about, there's a question and we have additional criteria. What does that really mean?
In our actual policy, we just have additional naming criteria beyond what's in the model policy.
Oh, okay.
So our criteria for when we're naming a facility, what specifically do we have to follow?
Makes sense, okay, thank you.
But Jeff, just to be clear, you mentioned another element, is that element part of this or?
It is not because it came just for our review the other day as we were looking at this policy a second time with Bill and his team.
Yeah, so just on that last piece, I agree with the $12,500 number we hear is very low. I think moving it up to the, is it 25? It used to be 20, now is it 25,000?
It is 25,000 now.
I think that's much more reasonable. In terms of the standards for facility construction, I'm sorry, the last part of this, the guidelines for naming, a lot of points there. So you're recommending we keep them as is. So I guess that's fine. The second one, which has to do with, sorry, the first one has to do with, has to be a deceased person. I never really understood that. I mean, a lot of school districts named, this is probably not going to come to us anytime soon, but a lot of school districts name buildings after people who are not deceased, so I don't know why that's in there, but I'll grant history on that one. The one that I do have some concern about, which could become complicated and dicey is this whole facility names may be selected as a result of leasing, naming rights, contracts to sell advertising agreements. Don't we have another policy that has to do with that?
There is another policy that talks about advertising in school facilities. It's in section eight of your manual. But again, this is specific to, I guess it just, it would allow for if you were constructing a building and you had a significant donor, it would allow for, it doesn't mean the board has to, but it allows for the possibility that a facility could be named after somebody if they were a significant donor to that facility. Significant as defined by the board.
So that board, that board at the time would have to get into their complicated conversation.
Yep.
You know, donor is one thing, I'm thinking advertising, you know, a corporate sponsor wants to name a stadium is often very complicated. So, but we're going to leave it as is because it gives boards flexibility, says maybe selected. Okay.
Out of curiosity, do we have a name for the early learning center?
Jefferson.
That's a given and moving forward.
Okay, so we're with the recommendation on that, two more to go, 5.30?
So 5.30 is our hiring process and criteria. District 200 has a pretty extensive section in that policy on nepotism. That was developed a few years back, I think with some concern over, you know, I think some employee board relationships at the time, and I think extensive time went into that nepotism policy. We don't feel negatively impacts our ability to hire, so our recommendation is to leave it in based on, I think it was significant public interest at the time in that coming in, unless the board directs us to look at it otherwise.
What's the policy say right now?
I could not quote the whole piece, dude, it just has a very specific section around nepotism. And it doesn't mean that we can, that somebody cannot be hired, but there are just notification requirements if in fact that happens.
Okay, any questions on that? Well, I do have a couple of comments. I'm fine keeping the language, some of the language seems kind of irrelevant at this point. The third paragraph, maybe I won't go into this in great detail, I thought it needs a deeper conversation, but some of it seems pretty hard to implement, I guess, is what I, my observation was the third paragraph. The fourth paragraph and the first sentence, I don't even know if that's relevant to any more persons who are employees of the board on the date that this policy became effective. This policy's been effective for 24 years. Is that sentence even relevant anymore? I don't know. The fifth paragraph says that notice has to be in writing. I'm not sure that it's, I think that applies to school board members. It just seems like in writing or seemed probably not important the way, the way that fifth paragraph was written. In the third line, it stated publicly, it should be just good on its public record, although we haven't been writing to, I don't even know that that would happen. So there's some little nuances in that paragraph, which I think might be good to have a follow for the next meeting. That's just my reaction to those specific paragraphs, some portions of that. Any other comments?
So just wanted to be clear, our recommendation was not to change it, you're asking the HR committee to review it.
I think it's worth a deeper look.
I would agree. I mean, I knew we were going to send this right here to see whether people wanted to keep, sorry, whether they wanted to keep the nepotism language in there or not, but and so I sort of put it aside. I'm reading it now as Fred's talking about it. And one of the nice things about going to the press versions of policies is their language is quite eloquent and I've seen some places where we could kind of sing this up and take out some relevant lines, like he said. And I think we could bring it back and move it along pretty quickly after we do that.
We'll invite Jim back to that meeting.
Just so, just so I, just so I understand, is the, is the policy very precise or example? Someone is employed in the district and the spouse, as an example, is a board member, and that cannot exist or is allowed to exist? I'm confused.
It can exist under certain criteria. So there are certain situations in which we can hire somebody that has a relationship, but that's all specifically identified in the policy. When is it allowed, when is it not?
Yeah, the specific question I was, Joe, commenting on was that it says the board member or district administrator shall publicly and in writing disclose a danger. I don't know that we need to, one or all of them.
We can talk.
Okay, moving on. So we would adopt your recommendation. We agree with the recommendation. Last one?
Last policy, 6.230, which is a policy that provides for a program for the gifted. The press language is a little bit more streamlined over ours. So our policy language not only identifies that we do provide a program for the gifted, but very specific criteria in terms of what grade level do we start, some much more specifics than the press language. So we're not recommending a change to our gifted program as it is, but we are recommending that we use the kind of the model press language, which just has a few less specifics in it than our policy. At least that would be our initial recommendation in reviewing it.
Does that impact the pressure teachers feel of whether to put a student in and out, parents call? Does that deal with any of that stuff? If I'm seeing, no, it's not relevant.
I think, you know, my granddaughter's got a problem with, and it's, you know, I think it's testing and there's criteria and, you know, that's it. You know, I think those are, you know, the issues that seem to be pretty solidly established as guidelines. And, you know, if somebody doesn't meet the criteria, they're not part of the program.
There's an appeal process.
Yeah, I'm sure there is, but it's still a, you know, there are guidelines of that and when.
We're good.
My comment in committee was just that I'm not sure that we need to have at the policy level details talking about, you know, when we're going to test kids and at what point the program starts, but I would like to know that that is easily accessible information from our district website so that any parent wondering if their child might qualify for this would understand what we do and when we do it and how we do it and all that.
So some of these are going to come back to us for posting and?
Yeah, any of them that we'll have to change will still come back in the policy review process, but we just wanted to get a little bit of advanced feedback on the concept. So just to be clear, next couple of meetings, I'm going to have kind of a similar list of numbers where we're seeking a little bit of that substantive feedback. We just thought that'd be useful before we actually draft it. So with this feedback, we'll get a mild draft and then come back to the policy review.
Okay, anything else? Next, now we can get to the oral reword. First is our student learning feature.
So tonight I want to talk about the video and video production. So we have, and I didn't know that Derek was going to be speaking today when I talked about her, but we've been doing a lot of talking with everybody and it's in Vision 2022 about our writing pieces and how that also is now over into video production. And we've seen a dramatic use in weed video for that and I wanted to highlight it. So weed video is this program that we've licensed and purchased, thank you very much, Rod. And it has a million, really over a million of video clips, images, music that our students, our staff, you can see some of it that Derek hears this evening, but it also allows them to put in their own video footage. It also allows them to not only use pre-canned music, but record their themselves playing and adding into pieces to that. So our LLC director has already taken a big lead in this with Lee Cook working on it and we're seeing a lot of that. I didn't know if the board knew that we had that whole tech integration website for our staff to use that Rod and Lee work on it. And it has a whole lot of the pieces that we do with fit, but it also has a whole lot of help for the different software and pieces that we use. Wanted to highlight that Lee has made just for our district 200 staff a whole new video that helps them not only how to use it, but instructional tools and story mapping ideas. And you can see at the very bottom of that, if you have questions about the site, contact your LLC director or Lee Cook. And I had an opportunity to go through their LLC directory just a few weeks ago and the excitement there around using this tool to help students craft their voice was tangible. So again, this is just a little blurb on weed video. What I wanted to get to is to actually show you how one of the students here at Johnson used this. So the assignment that the student had was to go through and write about or create a video from a different perspective from a character in a book. And you need to know just a little bit, you can go ahead and call it up, that's fine, that the assignment was, the book is about a girl that was raised by dolphins and is brought back into the world and trying to figure out how to use language. And she has a friend, Shay, that also was in an area where she couldn't learn language at all. And she created this video from Shay's point of view.
I hear my name and I don't know if I should respond, but my body just does it like if I wasn't in control of it. I know it was Mila calling me, telling me bye and that I could hurt dolphins, but some make the dolphin noise. I just don't respond because I'm, I've been hurt so many times and I'm scared to be hurt again. Dr. Beck tells me that I will be going with a different doctor and that I will be going with a different family too. And that they know what I've been through, but I'm not sure if anybody knows what I've been through. Dr. Beck comes in the room and tells me I must go say bye to Mila for the last time now. I have not told her bye and I'm scared to go with my new family. I will miss Mila, but I think it's time to move on and leave the past behind.
So I picked this, it's okay, you can see that it's not just a green screen where they're filming themselves. They're also learning how to add music, they're also adding timing. You have to know a lot about tone and mood of what is going on with this book and then how to pick imagery and pieces that go along with that. And while this is very different than write a paragraph or write a dialogue from a different perspective, you can see how much they needed to know about the book and the chapter to be able to do this. So a lot of that overall communication that's just passed over the word and even past just videotaping yourself talking about that and what goes into that. So that was Andrea Alvarez, I did want to highlight her work, she's a fifth grader here at Johnson. We do have other tools that our students are using, Fluke, RZA, Adobe Spark, but it's really mushrooming, mushrooming about the use of this out there. And I want to thank Katie Gabor, who's the teacher. And then Derek and Jackie have really done a phenomenal job here, not only using it, but talking about it with them. but talking about it with their staff. And then Rod and WeCook have really been working on that. And it's, it's really helping our students get their voice out, especially our English learners and some of those students. And you can see how much they really can communicate their own voice in their own using tools like this. Any questions this time? I won't walk the practice away.
Thank you, David.
I will cover. Just, just as a person who's in the technology profession, right, technology guys aren't always part of the core. And it's awesome to see how Rod is part of the team and how his skills and his team's skills manifest itself in learning. I think that's just awesome. So thank you so much. It's really fantastic.
All right, thanks. Next oral report is social emotional learning feature.
All right. Again, as I do every time, thanks. Thank you for the opportunity to champion social emotional learning. So today, typically I've highlighted something going on at one of our schools or at multiple schools. But today I just really want to give you a brief glimpse into something you'll learn a lot more in depth about on the 24th at our Committee of the Hall. And that's on the concept of school connectedness. This is the most important component of social emotional learning. So many times we think about social emotional learning, we may think or hear about it at the extremes. We may hear about anxiety, depression. We may hear about suicide prevention. Or we may talk about the specific social emotional learning standard. All of those areas are really, really important. They are part of a comprehensive social emotional learning program. But the most important thing or the most important starting point is a meaningful teacher and student relationship. And that gets to the concept of school connectedness. So I want to define school connectedness for you. It is the belief by students that adults in their school care about their learning as well about, as well as about them as individuals. It is the greatest protective factor in our schools to decrease in substance abuse, school absenteeism, violence, emotional distress, and suicidal ideation attempts. And it improves academic outcomes. So I tell you this because as we started building a framework, this is where we're starting. We consider right underneath our relationships grant and we have two SEL teams that are not, and not only embrace this with a belief, we've created a district belief around it, right, that meaningful teacher and peer relationships build school connectedness. But we're also building instructional tools and resources to help our schools ensure this. So at the elementary level, we have a team that is developing a tool that gets student voice and input around if they're, if they have a connection and trust an adult. It also will allow us to provide context, instructional context at the development level for the child. We're doing the same thing at the secondary level, our secondary team. That tool, instructional tool and resource is being created as we speak. And next year, early September, each of our principals will be bringing leadership members to a specific half day training in early September. Our elementary schools will be able to bring five staff members. Middle schools will be able to bring eight staff members. Each of our high schools will be bringing 10 staff members. That's in addition to the principals and some of the leadership team members. So I just gave you that preview and it has context. As we think about social emotional learning, it's a broad and vast concept. And as I've been providing the SEL framework training at all of our buildings, this is where we start. And I think it's a important place for all of our minds to be when we think about all the things that encompass SEL, school connectedness is certainly our starting point.
I'll stop and take any questions.
I have one question. This might sound obvious, but are you drawing at the middle and high school level, are you drawing the school counselors into this whole piece and having some of those people get some of that training? Because I know that a high school counselor, for instance, based on what they're seeing with a student's academic situation, might have a good idea of, you know, what kids could use a little bit more connectedness. And I want to make sure they're part of the equation.
Yeah, really at multiple levels are involved. So there are multiple counselors on our SEL team. So, and actually, we have counselors that are involved in the development of this tool. Over today, tomorrow, and Friday, I am, we're actually taking part in a trauma-informed practice training with all these certified trauma-informed practitioners. And there is a counselor from Weet North and Weet South and from Monroe and assistant principal from Public with us. And, and when you go to the trauma-informed training for practice and this really studies the effect that trauma has on the brain and how that affects our children in school, the number one practice to combat that is an adult that cares for you and cares about your learning. Right? So to answer your question, a long way away, counselors are definitely a part of it. And at the root of our counselors, our psychologists, our social workers are really part of this equation. But they are no more important than our teachers and really all of our educators that are all responsible for teaching us.
Okay, so we have this, this is a topic at the, at the Hall in two weeks?
Yeah.
Right? So, so great, thank you. You know, one of the things that we don't need to answer now, but maybe you can cover in that hour discussion?
I told you it'd be an hour lesson.
An hour-ish, kind of, you know, how we measure that whether we have meaningful relationships with, students have meaningful relationships with teachers and their peers and how to be sure that, you know, that those, those relationships have actions when, when called upon, so to speak. So talk about that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll go now.
Or you can answer it now if you want to. We can't wait two weeks. Third oral report is the Early Learning Collaborative.
So I want to introduce Eeshran, who is the, the director of the Weet Moreville Early Childhood Collaborative. So we just, I think, had a meeting probably a few months back, I think I shared a piece of data with the board just around kindergarten readiness and a couple of the, of the elements that we track when we look at readiness. And so we have been for the last couple of years, I think really blessed to have the existence of the Early Learning Collaborative. And I just wanted to make sure that the board kind of had a short context into what this collaborative has all allowed and kind of how it fits into our overall program, even though it sits kind of separate from, from District 200. So Elise, go ahead.
Awesome. Thank you for that introduction. And thank you to the school board and Dr. Schruth for letting me be here today and talk a little bit about the program. I also wanted to mention Ray O'Callaghan, the executive director of Metropolitan Family Services and obviously one of our most partner professors here today, Detective Farley, the principal at Jefferson Early Learning Center, also very important partner with our work. It's here at Central. So I should have mentioned this too. And quickly with your packet of materials, just to mention kind of what they're all about. Your first one is just kind of an overview of our program. It's kind of our general program wire. And I'm not going to talk about them in the presentation, but I just took a go through quickly. The second one is actually our developmental milestone emotional campaign that we have going on right now. So just an example of that. And then like Dr. Schruth just mentioned, we also get a really extensive annual report every year on kindergarten readiness from Julie, our district data guru. So we're really fortunate to have that within our brain. So that's also in your, within your packet. So yeah, my name is Eeshran. And just to go through sort of who we are, so we're a group of over 50 community agencies and early childhood providers, or just general supporters of early childhood, that are looking to increase kindergarten and school readiness for District 200. So we're kind of affecting those families that are that birth to five population. So either right before they're entering kindergarten, we're kind of there to make the connection, connect them to the resources in the area and make sure that they are more ready, more prepared for school when they get to you guys. We're really trying to, like it says right in the mission, to effectively coordinate services that are focused on providing learning success and kindergarten readiness for birth to five, and especially those most vulnerable populations of all of our areas around District 200. Some of the key sectors I just wanted to mention quickly that we have on the, on the collaborative that is also kind of listed on the back of our sheet here, you can kind of see the full list. But some key sectors are healthcare organizations, social service organizations, preschool, family childcare, government, head start, early intervention, home visiting libraries. So there's a lot of people that go into this early learning world, as I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with. So this, another thing we're trying to reach into the fire with, but why it's important to invest in early childhood. That's really because we know that through the research, 90% of brain development happens before the age of five. So these are some really crucial years of life to get those early learning experiences in and being exposed to those pieces to help get them more ready for kindergarten. We're also looking at a really holistic approach of the child, looking at assigning roles model with their physical abilities, their cognitive abilities, social emotional learning, already mentioned here today, and then language and communication are obviously the ones. And a lot of the quality early care and education leads to lower dropout rates, lower rates of teen parents, lower rates of violent crimes, higher rates of graduation, and so on and so forth. So strategic focus, why there? I think you guys are all very aware of this, but we have a very diverse community in District 200. We have 184 children, I think that number is even a little bit higher now, are identified as low income or at-risk families in our community. And that's gone up since 2000. We also have 68 different languages that are spoken in the district. So very diverse community that we're working with. Also through the, the data that we get from the kindergarten readiness data, we are actually able to disaggregate that data into all of our targeted neighborhoods. We have six targeted neighborhoods throughout District 200, which is where really our focus and where we're trying to kind of recruit families, talk to families about child development, and get them recruited into a lot of the preschool programs that are the frame of interest. So we're getting kind of the maximum benefit of the program itself. So we have four sort of overarching main goals for the program. So the first one is to improve communication among early childhood service providers. So we're really trying to increase the coordination and connection among all those professionals. So we want to make sure that the library is working with the children's museum and the school district is working with kind of all different partners among the community. So we're reducing duplication of services, making sure that we're, you know, whether a family comes in in one social service agency that they're connected with all of the different ones that they are able to be eligible for essentially. The next one is increasing parent education around child development. And a big piece with this is we have, I'll go into some of our outcomes that we have that'll make more sense, but really just trying to increase knowledge around child development and school readiness so that they know, they can kind of practice things at home to get them ready for school and to you guys as well. The next two are increasing professional development for the early childhood service providers. So offering professional development opportunities. We do one large scale professional development opportunity throughout the year as well as a couple kind of off sheets throughout, which we get to, where we can talk about the outcomes. And the last one is just kind of overarching, increasing kindergarten school readiness. And where we really focus here is increasing the number of children's screen for the ages and stages questionnaire. So that one, and I'll get into that a little bit more in a second too, but that one is really the kind of best practices screening tool. And District 200 uses it, Jefferson Early Childhood Center uses it as well. And it's basically a way to screen children to see where they're at developmentally in a number of different categories. So that if there are any delays, that we can identify them early and get them into appropriate programming. So whether it be occupational therapy, speech therapy, anything that they'll need, it's based on their age. So like I mentioned, we really focus on data-driven outcomes. So we really heavily rely on the data that we get from Julie. And Julie brought a highlight a couple of those kind of key successes from our kindergarten readiness data. So one of that is sound letter scores. That's one that we've measured since the very beginning, a pretty good predictor, or a very good predictor of school success. So that one in our kind of six targeted communities, targeted neighborhoods, what we're trying to reach out to, that has steadily increased from 2012, it was 21% to 36%. With given the diversity of our families and coming to the neighborhood, that's a, that's a very good increase for us. Also at the same time period, enrollment in all-day kindergarten from the targeted neighborhoods actually went up from 36% in 2012 to 75% in 2018. So that was a huge jump and something we're really proud of. Another thing within the report, it does talk about our superpowers for kindergarten readiness. And those I just wanted to highlight were SEL. So these were strong predictors of school success. So the curiosity and initiative, so taking risk and exploring, those are areas that our students are high in. Also language, communication, and conversation, and literacy, like I mentioned, sound letter scores. And then things that we're trying to work on, that we focus a lot of our work around for the, we call strong predictors, our literacy, so comprehension of text, answering questions, statements about a book that's read aloud to them. Also social emotional persistence and grit. So that's like facing challenges, completing tasks, and adjusting to change. And then math, which is, you know, that's kind of across, across the number of areas that we can, are trying to work on. So some of our outcomes related to those four goals that I already mentioned, we, for improving communication, we do have bi-monthly meetings with all of our different partner organizations that get together for practically two hours and kind of walk through whatever we're working on, working, focusing on kind of larger scale system changes with the whole early childhood realm. We have a Google, internal Google site, so we can share all of our internal documents, any resources, any events that are going on. Our external website is actually through the District 200 website. And then our Facebook page that mostly houses events and different things within the area that families really gravitate to so that they can kind of see what's going on in our community. We've got a number of, a lot of things that we do are kind of grassroots, community outreach and parent engagement in community. So a number of these pieces on parent education, we have, I'll just talk about a few. Our parent council is kind of a small group of Weet and Moreville and kind of District 200 parents that have children with, that are from birth to five years old. And they get together on a monthly basis and we talk about a number of different child development topics. So a couple of temperament and parenting, importance of playing to learn, bedtime routines, potty training are always in rotation each year. And that has grown from, we had a small group of 10 parents and now we're up to about 200 parents that are on that list that are been trying to get more information. Our Papa Play to Learns, that's in partnership with the DuPage Children's Museum and a couple of local libraries that we've done, just had museum exhibits come. And it's just kind of a open play to learn on the different STEM activities that they, that the museum can bring to the local libraries so families can enjoy those right in their own backyard. And we just, actually yesterday, had STEM night at Jefferson, which was really fun. That's obviously around science, technology, engineering, math activities for the students. And I think we had over 50 families and around 90 to 100 children that were attended. So this was a great event. There's a few other ones, but for the sake of time, keep us moving. The other one that I wanted to mention is our large scale, it's the Family Day of Play that we have every year. It's our annual event. It's sort of a play on a resource fair where all of our different partners and providers are on the table. We can come and have sort of a table, but rather than just give out resources, they actually have to bring in early learning activity. So we always host it at Public Middle School. And it's a really fun event, just a morning of kind of play and learning for the youngest children in the district. And kind of everyone's open and welcome to attend. Those are some of the different organizations that you can see that would be at that event each year. And the attendance has gone from, in 2016, we had just under 100. And this past February, we had over 200 families. So it keeps going up each year. And I think it's typically around 75% of the attendees are from either Weet or Moreville. So they're our local district families. The last two goals, just wanted to briefly touch on how we're trying to increase professional development. We have an early childhood symposium, which is our professional development every year. And we have around 80, 80 to 90 early childhood professionals that come to that event each year. In our last couple of years, we focused on social emotional development. Last year, we Last year, we focused on building resilience for children and executive functioning. I kind of talked about that trauma before we came here, that you guys, it sounds like you guys are doing this year as well. And this year, we are focusing on a strength-based approach and building relationships with families and educators that they can be needed. And then our, sorry, very last one, increasing, so we have our developmental screening marketing campaign, which we have the little flyer for, and that one, just to give you kind of some outcomes of that data, in twenty, this year, twenty fourteen, we had a hundred and seventy children that were screened, and this past year, we had eight hundred, or I'm sorry, six hundred and eighteen children screened. So that number has gone up each year, and it's from us, you know, have directly roots in the ground from running with families and talking about the importance. Another big outcome, I know again, you guys are very familiar with this stuff, but because of the collaborative and us being sort of in place in this school district in this area, we've been able to have increased federal and state funding for, obviously, a big partnership with the school district and Metropolitan Family Services. So preschool expansion grant we received in twenty fifteen, so that was forty additional preschool slots. This year, Brandon received the prevention initiative grant, which is for sixteen unique home-based lots. And this is where our family support workers get to go into the homes of the families once per week, and are able to do early childhood activities based on the age of the child. And it's for that program, zero-to-three-year-olds, the PEG program is four-year-olds, and then this year, we just opened up a new Head Start classroom in Meesbrook. There's nineteen preschool sites for that one. So the last piece I wanted to talk about is just our funding history and some of the challenges that we've had. So this past, so kind of like Dr. Schiller mentioned a little bit, so we've been funded for the last several years, we're going into our sixth year of funding through the DuPage Foundation's Brighter Early Grant. So they have recognized as a pliable organization that they want to fund this early childhood work and really help to increase this kindergarten school readiness for students. And so they've, you know, put a lot of money into these programs, and they're actually more and more they're popping, so the funding has kind of been reduced. So for the first four years, and we were actually the first four Wheaton, Warrenville in DuPage County that existed. So for the first four years, we received seventy-five thousand per year. In year five, it went down to fifty thousand. And then we're currently, like I said, in our sixth year of funding, which they've given us again, fifty thousand dollars, and they're going to give it to us for a three-year grant, because they realize this kind of collective impact, community engagement work is, you know, it takes a little longer to build relationships and move our outcomes forward, so they did recognize the need for a longer period of time. But right now, we only will have funding through twenty twenty-one. So as of, so we're in our sixth year, we're in the first year of a three-year grant, if that makes sense. And so just some of the challenges is the reduction of funding, obviously, in our fifth year was a, was kind of a hit tar program, so we have to get a lot more creative when we're doing all of these different events and working with partners and kind of relying on them for funding, or space, or different things like that. We've also had to privately fundraise and apply for program-specific grants for things like the Family Day of Play, different community outreach events, our dental, our dental event that we had last summer is a private grant that we applied for through Chicago Medical Health Society. So it's, that's kind of how we're staying afloat and able to keep doing the amount for what we have been doing in the past. We are currently working on our sustainability plan for three years to kind of look to when the funding will be running out for June thirtieth, so that is what works right now. And then just the last one, just again, the, our website, Facebook page, and then my contact information. So I know I went through that very quickly, but I guess I have any questions?
I have a couple. This program, you mentioned vulnerable communities, does it also affect non-bonehole-area students? Are they involved in the process?
Yeah, so that's a great question, and I feel like a good example of that is to talk about our parent council group. So it's a very diverse group. We have, we even have a stay-at-home mom that is a very active parent, and we do have a number of active parents that are also involved, because as we know, yes, we are trying to reach the vulnerable communities with our free-reduce programs, but really, kids don't come with a manual, so we want to help all parents with raising their, you know, raising children for that birth to population. So yeah, we, it runs the gamut, and we don't, we don't say no to any families, we're helping all families in District 200.
And part of the process is an evaluation of whether they're ready to attend kindergarten or something else, or they have a special early need or early learning need. Do we, do you at some point say, this child is, children go at five or six years old in kindergarten, that you suggest to the parents that they wait a year or anything like that?
So that is more of either, we don't recommend anything like that. That would be kind of more of a district or, you know, parent piece.
Okay, so the testing that was referred to then?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Then, what is that then testing for, I guess? Is it a disability or is it a, I'm more concerned about, I guess, the social with that wide range of five and six-year-olds, you know, there's, you know, there's going to be, you know, two-years difference between those students, and I'm curious of how that social side of that would be evaluated.
Yeah, so the developmental screening, the ages and stages questionnaire does check for any kind of delays, like whether it's physical, cognitive, and that would be a really good determinant to see if they need any of those special therapies or services. So we can get them directly in there for that zero-to-three population typically earlier mentioned, for, you know, and it's specific to whatever the need is. Or obviously, you know, Jefferson and some other areas for that three-to-five population. But, so that would kind of be, that's how we test for that one, and then get them into the correct programs. The other one, the District 200 data is, is right around, they're testing children that are going into kindergarten, and that's rather, I don't want to say rather new, but we basically just get those scores, so we can kind of see where the children are at, and then when we can improve our programs or focus, we'll have them on math in one area, or more focused on social-emotional development in some other areas. But we do get, you know, specifics on specific students, it's more of like the overarching in the different neighborhoods, if that makes sense.
And then you mentioned that your funding needs are in place. Don't you have some events during the year, I think I've attended a few, that help raise outside of grants and so on?
Yeah, so we have done a number of fundraising events, but they are very small scale, so we've partnered with Warrens and Ellens, that are two local restaurants in the area, to do kind of a fundraising night, so it's a certain percentage of everyone that goes there, you know, that goes back to our program. We've also done with Apratut Swim School in Wheaton, they do like a swim, an open Saturday, Sunday, Saturday, Sunday Swim Day, and then the proceeds for that go to our program. But they've been more smaller-scale fundraising events. We also have been supported in smaller ways through Metropolitan Family Services through their gala as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So I just had one question. I'm going to go to a really high level, maybe I missed this along the way, but describe the kind of the relationship between Wheaton, Warrenville, Early Childhood Collaborative, Jefferson, Early Childhood Center? I mean, I kind of get the purpose, but what is the kind of organizational relationship, I guess?
Sure. Well, Stephanie is obviously the principal at Jefferson, and she also sits on our kind of what we call our executive committee, so they're kind of our decision-making board and kind of our strategic thinkers, how we move forward, what we're going to focus on for the year. So Stephanie is our co-chair actually of that group. We're also are, like I mentioned, the STEM nights, we do a number of activities within and with, kind of co-host with Jefferson as well for all the students, not only surrounding communities, but also for the Jefferson families as well. Yeah, we're working with a lot of, you want to, you may, like, well, just about, because it's really hard to keep the topic.
I think the way that we really work well together is, funding is very limited, and what we realize is we can't do everything in a silo or in isolation. So when our organizations come together, we really are able to leverage the resources for all students. So when we're working with fifty different agencies, what we realize is that we have an overlapping service, and then we have a gap in service. So we look at what are our needs, we look really closely with Julie Lowe at that data, we look at students that are coming to kindergarten, we look at how are they succeeding, where are their gaps? And then when instead we backtrack through our community and look at those areas, so that when we are targeting our resources, we're bringing our resources to those communities, to those families, to strengthen those supports and weaknesses. So that's how we work together, is we're not duplicating, but we're leveraging our resources to cover the community.
And there's six of these across DuPage County, is that correct? Or one of the, one of the six?
And we're one of the first ones.
Let's just say we're the first. Okay, thank you. Okay, written reports, we have three written reports. First is the monthly financial report, the second one is the FOIA report, and the third is the early learning center construction report. Provide for information, determine questions or comments on any of those?
I have one. It looks like we're going to be, when does the tax money come in? I mean, we're getting close to hitting our cash flow, you know, I think we had about forty-two million or something like that at this point, and we have about three months between now and the end of the year. And I started to recall, we're going up without debt service to about thirteen thousand, or thirteen million a month. So those kind of equate to a low cash projection. And do we anticipate at this point that we'll need to borrow or anything? Number one. Number two, in light of that, and as we move forward on utilizing fund balance, we'll be confronted with this in the future again, and do we foresee any concern about the need to borrow in the future?
First question, we go receive tax money in June, come June, getting into June. If you recall, last year, it would be the prepayments, and so it was a little, a little bit different last year, but we anticipate not needing to borrow this year, and obviously in the meantime, we do start drawing down the fund balance, we have to be mindful of cash flow, and so we're not in a position of borrowing quite afford a test of unbalanced policy. So the short answer, yes, we're, we're not in a position to borrow, we do anticipate. And we'll continue to monitor moving forward our cash balance, and if it's appropriate, we'll add recommendations to the board that we're there. Okay, any other questions on that? Next is a report from board members, there's a few board committee reports that were attached, I think it was HR, HR policy, what was your, it's going to be finance, you're right. Any questions on those?
Do we leave all the other written reports?
No, we can go back.
Okay, I'd like to comment on a couple lines. I noticed in the FOIA reports, we've had a number, and I noticed it as I was observing a few of the board meetings on the, on the video, that, you know, there seems to be questions at times about, you know, some of the costs that we incur to be involved with organizations and so on. I think it's one of the ways that we connect with the community, and I think they're very important parts of that. And, you know, I think we're, you know, there's this implication that those are not well-spent dollars. That's how we reach the people that are not part of the student population. I think the same issue came up maybe a couple of months ago about the attendance at the annual conference and the staying overnight and attending those items. You know, I personally have, you know, had high regard to that, that activity. I think that the, you know, the interaction that I had with other school districts and other board members that we get after hours, after the classroom, you know, I recall, you know, discussing with various other districts, negotiations that were going on, you know, all-day kindergarten, some of the policies the different districts have, you know, start hours, the things that we've been talking about, you know, before and after-school programs, when to start, you know, whether finals are before and after. You know, those are the kind of things that we get by attending those processes in addition to the classroom activity. And I think that's an important thing that, you know, I, I think it's lost when we hear criticism about some of those costs that we incur, and, you know, I, I think they're very valuable processes, so, you know, it's, it's, you know, again, I, it disturbs me when I hear that, because it's a real isolated look at something that is a much bigger picture I, enough said.
Thank you for that. Okay, any other comments on written reports? Okay, next is reports from board members. First, we have two board committee reports. Any questions on those? Next is other reports from board members. I do have one thing, but I know Mr. Roman has kind of a follow-up for an issue he's been tracking with the IASB Delegate Assembly?
Yeah, thanks. As most of you know, I have an issue with the way the Delegate Assembly adopts resolutions. Resolutions are an important element for the Illinois Association of School Boards. A resolution serves two functions, either it's a position statement, which means it gives direction to the IASB, and most notably, their lobbyists, on what should be advocated down at the, in Springfield before the General Assembly, on behalf of all school districts who are members of the IASB. Or secondly, the belief statement, which is supposed to be a commonly-held value that the IASB promotes on behalf of all school board members. And yet, a resolution can pass by the Delegate Assembly by a simple majority, and it's based on a one vote per one school district basis. So it's possible that what becomes a commonly-held value, or a belief statement, or a position statement, can get just a bare majority to vote, and a substantial minority of the school boards are, don't favor it, and yet they're held as commonly-held value by the IASB, and it becomes more if the, among the school districts who oppose the resolution in the minority are large school districts which have a majority of the population of the state of Illinois. As I said, it's based upon a one vote per district basis with no accommodation for the population size of the district. So I have made my displeasure known to the IASB by sending a lengthy email to Ben Schwarm, who responded that the only way they could be rectified was to amend the constitution of the IASB. And then I asked him, I got a copy of the constitution, I got a copy of the Delegate Assembly rules, and the rules and procedure that are prepared by the board directors, and I find out that it's the board of directors by majority vote of the board that established a majority vote rule for the Delegate Assembly. So I've bothered both Chris and Brad and Jeff with the DuPage Legal memorandum, where I analyzed an approach we could use. And I'm advocating that this board and other boards get together and write letters to the members of the board of the IASB to change their rule on how resolutions get adopted from a simple majority to a two-thirds majority, to make sure that at least a resolution that is going to reflect the common value of, of members of the IASB or a position statement really reflect the vast majority of the school board members of the IASB rather than a simple majority. And I'm going to prepare a draft letter, submit it to Brad and Chris and Jeff as the executive committee, and probably won't get done until, presented to you until after I leave the board, so it's up to you whether you want to carry it on. I just want to let you know that I'm doing that, because I think it's so unfair, and it's in conflict with, with the principles that the IASB supposedly values, so that's it.
Thank you for carrying that torch and helping kind of provide the tools we need to move that forward. Do you ever talk about this issue with your other superintendents or with other organizations? Is this something else that others are equally concerned about?
Yeah, I have not yet. Again, I think it's predominantly a board-based issue, but certainly, once we have the draft of the Jigsaw Memory, absolutely can.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Roman. One real quick report for me, as I attended the session last night, I don't remember the name of it, Taming the Teen Excitement Beast, did I get that right? Fantastic program last night, well-attended, was there, Mr. Long was there, watching, it was Facebook Live, was recorded Facebook Live, he was there too. So great, great event, a lot of informed parents, a lot of engaged parents, and it was a great conversation, so I think it was a, you know, if you look at some of the conversations with some of our other public events recently, this one was definitely very well-attended. So thank you for that. So, thank you for that, before the more of those. Any other reports from board members? Okay, we have three topics for future discussion. Number one is the Phase Four Refunding, which is looking at our debt service refinancing. Number two is social-emotional learning update, and then three is the Annual Professional Development Report. There are three announcements in terms of future board meetings. On April 17th, 2019, we have a chat with the board at 8:00 to 9:30 a.m. at Wheaton South High School. It's always great to hear from our students. On April 24th, 2019, we have the Committee to Hold, 7:00 at the SSE. And then, less than a week later, we have our April 30th, 2019 Board Reorganization Meeting, 6:00 at the SSE. Our next regular board meeting, which will be the new board after it's seated, May 8th, 2019, at 7:00 at the SSE. Do we have any other public comments? No more public comments. Okay, we do have a closed session for tonight. We are not going to take any action after this closed session. I have a reading to do again, so I move that we adjourn to a closed session for the purpose of discussing the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. It's in paragraph five, ILC S120 slash two, subparagraf C, subparagraph one. Do you have a second on that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Roman. We have a roll call for this.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mrs. Craigery?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Hamiani?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Maddison?
Yes.
Okay, the motion to move to closed session is passed, and I-